Good evening again. Today is Tuesday, August 20th, 2024. This is Board of Education regular meeting. Can I please have a roll call?
Remy Dean.
Present.
Lonzo Greenwood, Lonzo Greenwood, Walter Hood. Timothy Lockett. Danielle Moore, Danielle Moore. Latoya Mosley, present. Willie Ray.
Present.
We have a quorum. Ms. Ray, please prepare, please.
Everyone stand for prayer, please. Stand and bow your head. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your mercy and your kindness for waking us up this morning, giving us the activity of our limbs. We ask that you bless us with knowledge and understanding of how to conduct the business of the board and the school and the students with a reasonable amount of intelligence. This we ask in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Next will be pleasantly, please.
President of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next will be adoption of the agenda given the board president discretion to take items out of order or in executive session. Get a motion.
I make the motion.
It's been motioned by Ms. Willie Ray. Could I have a second? Second by Mr. Walter Hood, roll call.
Willie Ray.
Yes.
Walter Hood. Remy Dean.
Yes.
Lonzo Greenwood, Lonzo Greenwood. Timothy Lockett.
Yes.
Danielle Moore, Danielle Moore. Latoya Mosley, yes.
Motion passed. Conduct public hearing concerning e-learning program pursuant to the section 10 slash 20 at 56 of Illinois School Code, 105 ILC S five slash 10, that's 20 point 56. Can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I second.
Before you call the roll, honor. Jennifer?
Want me to speak to it real quick?
Yes.
All right. So every three years, the district must submit a board-approved e-learning plan to the Regional Office of Education in order for us to use e-learning days instead of making up bad weather days at the end of the school year. You received a few weeks ago, the draft plan. And within the draft plan, it includes our commitments as a district. It also outlines the timelines that are related to e-learning days along with guidance for each of our grade level bands, whether it be for elementary, middle, high school, our special programs like CTE dual credit. And then we also address meeting the needs of our special learners. So special needs programs, our multilingual learners. But we also include links for families to access materials that would be supplementary. For that day, a lot of things are happening synchronously, which means that the teacher is online with students. But we also have asynchronous time as well, where students are working on their own on the activities given to them by their teachers or also through these links that have been provided. We do take attendance on these days and report that attendance to the state. And we also make sure that there's proper communication. Within the plan, there's a listing in the back of each of the buildings, the principal and assistant principals, phone numbers, emails. In case parents have questions, they can address those questions with the building leaders. And then we make sure that we communicate via social media and also robocalls on when we plan on using e-learning days and how best to reach teachers during those days. Do you have any questions from the e-learning plan that you saw or anything that I've just said?
Any questions?
Of course, we provide the technology for students.
Correct. That's in our commitments, that we provide the technology.
Hey, no questions. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, let's get a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Make a motion. Remy Dean, motion. Remy Dean, motion. Second, Walter Hood. Roll call, please.
Remy Dean.
Yes.
Walter Hood. Lonzo Greenwood, Lonzo Greenwood. Timothy Lockett.
Yes.
Danielle Moore. Danielle Moore. Latoya Mosley, yes. Willie Ray.
Yes.
Thanks. Motion passed. Public comments? Let me get a motion to close the public hearing.
I make the motion.
There's been motioned by Ms. Willie Ray. Second by Mr. Walter Hood, roll call.
Willie Ray.
Yes.
Walter Hood. Remy Dean.
Yes.
Lonzo Greenwood, Lonzo Greenwood. Timothy Lockett.
Yes.
Danielle Moore, Danielle Moore. Latoya Mosley, yes.
Motion passed. Next, Cindy, our recognition. Thank you.
Yes, we have a few today.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I do have several recognitions to share with the board. So please bear with me as we get through a number of these. First of all, annually, the Illinois State Board of Education recognizes the outstanding contributions of personnel from across the state. And awardees are honored at the Those Who Excel Awards banquet. This was held in May this year. And our school district had 23 staff who earned recognition by the Illinois State Board of Education. So yes. We have numerous exceptional staff, and we are grateful that ISB has recognized a few of our best, including Quan Shonda Nicholson, Jordan Rubin, and the Instructional Learning Team at Officer Elementary for Awards of Excellence. Additionally, Kayla Wyatt, Mikael Ward, and Kimberly Allen with the Awards of Meritorious Service. And the awards of special recognition included Wesley Hollis, Brittany Brown, and Tammy Gibson. The East St. Louis Chapter of Top Ladies of Distinction celebrated the leadership and achievements of several of our staff in June. And honorees included Jerry Southward, Dr. Kareem Mateen, and Roosevelt Mitchell Jr. They were recognized as men of distinction for their outstanding contributions within the community. And they also serve as role models for our students within the school district. Teacher Rosalind Rogers has been appointed as member-at-large to the National Association for Music Education Council for orchestral education for her commitment to inclusive orchestral education in the upcoming school year. Rosalind is the strings teacher at Lincoln Middle School and formerly also at the Young School of Excellence. School District 189 leaders, administrators, staff, and students annually support the United Way campaign. And in 2023, this helped us achieve an all-time high of over $28,300 that were raised. The top performing campuses included the following that raised over $4,000 each. Bush Alternative, our smallest campus. Right. Exceptional leadership from this small and mighty campus earned, raised $4,397. The Young School of Excellence, over $4,327. And Avent Elementary with $4,225. And all of these generous contributions directly support social service programs within our community and benefit our students. So we thank them for their incredible support. For the first time in history of our Certified Nursing Assistant Program in East St. Louis, every student who took the Illinois Nursing Assistant Certification Exam in spring of '24 passed. Doved the magnificent seven. These exceptional career and technical ed students are Sarah Bennett, Destiny Bones, Anaya Edwards, Tanaya Fairley, Jeriah Hunter, Michaela Pearson, Nyona Quilling. And so we congratulate these scholars, most of whom are now at college or working. Excited for that. And then we thank also their CTE nursing instructor, Demetria Jackson, for this remarkable achievement and look forward to celebrating the next class next year. Several students in our district's 21st Century Community Learning Center's after-school program had their artwork selected for national recognition. The Illinois State Board of Education chose pieces by students Anaya Davis, Leila Anderson, Jerma- Jerma- Jermelia Coleman, Vanessa Farley, Journey Denzmore, Ryland Slaughter, Zoe Sheridan, and Cameron Brown and Jasmine Ross were showcased at the U.S. Department of Education's Summer Symposium. So we are congratulatory of our talented students on this spotlight. Additionally, Bush Alternative teacher Brianna Morales has been accepted to the sixth cohort of We Are America Teaching Fellows Program, where her students this year will participate in the We Are America Project. This project works with teachers and young people across the country to spark a new national conversation about American identity. And over the course of this upcoming year, personal stories from students at Gordon Bush Alternative will be gathered to publish, to be published in the We Are America book. And it will provide a richer and deeper understanding of what it means to be American. So we salute that their student voices will be raised up in this upcoming year. Kalen Nelson, eighth grade student at Mason Clark Middle School, was selected to participate in the prestigious All-State Basketball Game, representing the very best of middle school athletes from across Illinois. In his words, "The All-State game for me was something big, something new, but overall, a great experience I will never forget." He participated in a multi-day event across, against the nation's top middle school athletes, learning from the best coaches in the industry and cultivating further skills. And last but certainly not least, we are very excited to recognize and celebrate successful seasons of some of our spring athletes. So first of all, I want to highlight that the East St. Louis Senior High School Flyers Varsity Baseball Team won the IHSA Class 3A Regional Game. Likewise, the Girls' Varsity Softball Team also won the IHSA Class 3A Regional Game. And I know we have in the audience many of the coaches and athletes from our Varsity Boys and Track and Field Team. So would you please all stand? Coaches, as well as the athletes, please stand. These are the IHSA Class 2A State Champions. So I'm going to highlight a few names. And as I do, could you all come forward, please? We have a token of our appreciation that we wanted to share with you. And then we'll also pause for some photos as well. So if you want to just come forward here, and then you guys can go ahead and hand out. You've got the... So a few names that I wanted to highlight included Kenny Buchanan. Kenny, can you wave your hand if you're here? And that's just it. We've got many of them that have already gone on to college. But we salute him. He was the state champion in the 200 meters.
Right.
Darius Ivy. Elmo Gilliam. Andrew Bones. All right. Well, you guys have big footsteps to feed into. We're looking forward to you being recognized next year, too. Yeah, go ahead. Shamand McLean. Tyreek Baker. And members of a relay team, Tyreek again, Mark Samuels, DeMarcus Coleman, and Darius Ivy. So thank you all, young men. And our coaches, please step forward as well. Good job.
Our head coach, Gary Malloy, and our chief. So we want to, we're really grateful. And so let me go ahead and if I can get some pictures. If you wouldn't all mind coming and standing with them so we can get a photo.
Got to squeeze up. Oh, it's got to be a long line right now.
If I could have you kind of brunch together, maybe do a couple rows. Snagger, you got the idea. We've got lots of cameras for people with cameras. Want to come in the center?
Can you see us all?
This way. All right, I'm going to have you stand. This is your only one down.
All right, remind you guys, we're standing. East St. Louis Varsity Team to the school board. Just like to say thank you for all that you do, not only for the track programs, but all the athletic programs in our district. And so with that being said, we have a special gift for you all as our real saying thank you. So you have... Mr. Walter Hood. Latoya Mosley. Danielle Moore. And then we also have this for some personnel here. This is Mr. Greenwood. And we just want to thank Greenwood. And so to all of the board captains and members, we have t-shirts for you all as well. We can give you a chance to get the size, and we'll take care of that tomorrow. But we do have one for Miss to cover, Ms. Garrett. And without her, this season could not have been possible. So she's one of the assets that we have here in this district. She's on call 24/7. But answering the phone would definitely need her. She put out so many fires and saved us from so many embarrassing moments. I just want to thank Mrs. Thomas today. Thank you, Coach. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you all.
We have wonderful coaches and wonderful athletes, student athletes. So thank you all for the great work that you're doing. They set goals and delivered. So thank you, thank you. Our Class 2A State Champions. Additionally, I want to highlight that our Girls' Varsity Track and Field Team also placed fifth at state. So they were great competitors, and they were also sectional champions before that. Flip my page the right way. And then at the middle school level, also wonderful things happening. So our IESA 3A stack, state track and field competitors from Mason Clark including, included the girls who tied for sixth place. And I want to give a special shout out to the 4x200-meter relay team who set a new record.
State record, right?
New state record. Thank you. And then our eighth grade boys from Mason Clark. Are any of you here in the room? Could you please stand and come forward? The Mason Clark eighth grade boys were the state champions for 3A state track and field. And I want to, if you actually want to come forward, we have something for you as well. And the coaches, if you're here, come on forward. Again, wonderful, wonderful work happening. A few highlights that I'm going to name. Jamari Ware was the state champion for 100 meters and the state champion and new record setter for the 200 meter. Is he here this evening? No.
Football practice.
That's good, too. And our 4x100-meter relay were the state champs and set a new record and a new all-time best. So where the, those, excuse me, those athletes include, included Derayne San, Sane, Jamari Ware. Jalike, I'm sorry, Zakyle? Zakile?
Zakile.
Zakile. Thank you. My apologies. Wilborn and Aaron Owens. So wanted to salute each of them as well. And then their head coach is Damarius Thomas. So I wanted to recognize the great work as well that the coaching staff are doing.
Can I do that photo with you guys together? Is it okay if I just do that individually?
Yes.
Yes.
You want to open it up, girl? So that was the eighth-grade boys from Clark. But our seventh-grade boys from Clark were also the state champions in IESA 3A. Again coached by Demarius Thomas. And the four-by-two-hundred-meter relay also set a new record. Yes, clap, clap. Those names included Avarian Duff, Jarrett DeWalt, Alex Bass, and Devon Jobe.
Beat the record about five seconds.
Great, great. So thank you all very much. Oh, come on up. Oh, good, yes. Seventh grade team, come on up. I know it's confusing because they're no longer seventh graders.
They don't seem to be able to move.
Right.
Open it a little tighter.
Tighten up, tighten up. Tighten up, somebody get in the front row.
There you go. And just kind of stagger. And that's not all. At Lincoln Middle School, we also had Keenan McLinton, who set a new state record in the 110 high hurdles. Their eighth-grade boys got 10th place overall, and the seventh-grade boys got third place overall. The four-by-100-meter relay. The four-by-100-meter relay also were state champs and set a new record. So we salute that work. And the four-by-400 were state champs. And then last but not least, the Y-Veter Young School of Excellence also had the one, had 1A state track and field competition. So we salute the great work that they did as well. Did I miss anyone in the audience? That was here to be recognized? Thank you all for coming out this evening.
Thank you.
Superintendent, did you want to say a few words?
No, I just want to say we really are proud of you guys. We know that sometimes people don't understand that there's a strong correlation between being a good athlete and athletic success and real-world experiences. Because as an athlete, to be a champion, it teaches you so much grit, determination, perseverance, teamwork, how to rebound from adversity, how to handle failure and get back up and win again. So there's so many life lessons that you learn from athletics. So we just want to congratulate you all. Coach Malloy, it looks like you got another, several more state championships at the varsity level on the way to the high school. And one more thing about that varsity team, I saw a couple of meets earlier in the year, and I said, "Coach, I don't know this year, it's not looking quite like it has in the past, the last time we won state." He said, "Don't worry, I got a plan." And what they did, it was so, they were so strong in the field events. And that was the first time that I've seen a team from East St. Louis win state because of what occurred with the field events. So it lets us know that our coaches are doing a phenomenal job, our athletes are working hard. And again, we are so proud of you, continued success in all of your future endeavors. Thank you. Yeah, they can leave, yeah. All right, thanks, guys, appreciate you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you get right size?
This is right size.
Okay.
It's nice, too.
Yeah. Got a lot of recognition.
Yeah.
But you know, it's...
Yeah, it's fine, it's good, that's a good thing.
Good stuff.
Okay, next would be motions to approve minutes of the July 18, 2024 board meeting. Can I have a motion?
I make the motion.
There's been motion by Ms. Willie Ray, second by Walter Hood. Roll call, please.
Willie Ray.
Yes.
Walter Hood. Remy Dean.
Yes.
Lonzo Greenwood, Lonzo Greenwood. Timothy Lockett.
Yes.
Danielle Moore, Danielle Moore, Latoya Mosley, yes.
Motion passed. Presentations, reports.
No other presentations and reports.
Public comments? We don't need executive sessions, you guys.
No, sir, we don't.
Up next is a report from Tim.
Thank you, Mr. President. Need a motion to approve by unanimous vote, action items 13A, 13B, 13C, 13D, 13E, 13F, 13G, 14A, 15A, 16A, 16B, 16C, and 16D. Can I get a motion, please?
I make the motion.
There's been motion by Ms. Willie Ray, second by Walter Hood, roll call.
Willie Ray.
Yes.
Walter Hood.
Yes.
Remy Dean.
Yes.
Lonzo Greenwood, Lonzo Greenwood. Timothy Lockett.
Yes.
Danielle Moore, Danielle Moore. Latoya Mosley, yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now I need a motion to approve the following action items. 13A, approval of the East St. Louis School District 189 e-learning plan. 13B, approval of the reading, all, reading of all resolutions by heading only. 13C, approval of Resolution Number 082024-A, adopting fiscal year 2025 budget for the East St. Louis Area Cooperative for Special Education. 13D, approval of Resolution 082024-B, adopting fiscal year 2025 budget for the East St. Louis Regional Cooperative for Vocational Education. 13E, approval of 2024 through 2027 collective bargaining agreement and memorandum of understanding between East St. Louis School District 189 and the East St. Louis Federation of Teachers, Local 1220. 13F, approval of transportation contract extension with Illinois Central for transportation services. 13G, approval of revised 2024 through 2025 school calendar, changing the 261 workday year for 12-month employees to a 260-day workday year by adding April 17, 2025 as a board-granted holiday. 14A, approval of the financial report for the month of July, 2024. 15A, approval of the personnel report, addendum and contracts as presented. 16A, approval of the Buildings and Grounds Report and Addendum, waiving the fees for 2BG, 3BG, and 4BG for use of premises requests. 16B, approval of the curriculum report and addendum. 16C, approval of the Policy Committee Report, first reading, waiving the second reading. And finally, 16D, approval of the financial report and addendums as presented. Can I get a motion, please?
I make the motion.
There's been motion by Ms. Willie Ray, second by Mr. Walter Hood. Roll call, please.
Willie Ray.
Yes.
Walter Hood.
Yes.
Remy Dean.
Yes.
Lonzo Greenwood, Lonzo Greenwood, Timothy Lockett.
Yes.
Danielle Moore, Danielle Moore, Latoya Mosley, yes.
Mr. President, that does conclude my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. Next would be, any old business? Any new business? Next meeting would be September 17, 2024. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I make the motion.
You make the motion, that's your...
I second.
It's been moved by, it's been moved by Remy Dean, second by, who's that?
Willie Ray.
Willie Ray, roll call.
Remy Dean. Willie Ray.
Yes.
Lonzo Greenwood, Lonzo Greenwood, Walter Hood. Timothy Lockett.
Yes.
Danielle Moore, Danielle Moore, Latoya Mosley, yes.
Beats the jury, thank you.
Thank you all. She made that motion. You waiting on your time?